Call order, Paintsville City Council Regular Meeting, Monday, January 8th, 2018. Happy New Year, everybody. Chief, would you lead us in the flag, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're called, please. I've got a few announcements to make. Mrs. Porter, Bonnie Porter, our Main Street Director, is ill at this time. I think she is going for a biopsy on the 17th of this month, so if you don't mind, your hopes and prayers are requested at this time. Thank you. The Swinging Bridge. I got reports the other day that there were some kids playing on that Swinging Bridge. Now, we're gonna have to make a decision as a council, since we didn't get the grant money, which was $865,000, to replace that. Do we want to leave that thing up, or do we want to make arrangements to have it taken down?
You know, there's a lot of people that want it, and a lot of people don't care. There's a lot, you know, there's a lot of different...
Structurally, what's wrong with it? Just deteriorated?
Evidently, evidently, when they put it in, it is not concreted at the bottom. It is more of a wooden structure. So, if you put a new one in anyway, Ms. Sarah, that one's gonna have to come down.
Wow.
So, the decision we gotta make is, do we wanna spend the money to go ahead and have somebody come in there and take it down now, or do we want to leave it as it is?
Will you go big liable if somebody gets hurt on it?
Does the city own it? I have no idea. Ms. Kim, do you know?
No, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Ms. Kim doesn't know it.
Can we take something down that don't belong to us?
No.
I don't know that.
Well, it's in the city limits, and it's part of the city, so I'm sure that...
How did the kids get on it?
Well, they climb across the railing of it, you know, where it's boarded up, or climbing across the railing and getting on that thing.
Their feet are wrong.
So...
I think they stepped out of sight of mine.
We were young.
I forgot.
Forgot what it was like.
We don't own those bridges.
It's like when you go on that railroad bridge.
Yes, we should have a deep that problem, I'm sure.
Well, when could that... Can Jeff find out?
Yes, Jeff can find out. But I just wanted to throw that out to you, that somebody had seen some kids playing on that bridge.
If it's a hazard to...
If it's a...
For a liability, then yeah, you're gonna have to do something.
All right, then the other thing is, in your packet, I gave you a list of goals for 2018. I'm not gonna go through those. If the press wants them, when we finish, I'll give you a copy of them. Actually, number 12 should be at the top of that list, because everything below number 12 is what we're trying to do to make sure we accomplish number 12. Does that make sense to you?
So, it is not in no certain order?
No, they are not in any particular order whatsoever. And also, Kim, the EMC Insurance...
Yes.
They have to come in and do a, like, a walkthrough of what we need to fix as far as getting better rates. Is that correct?
Yes, that's what you got the other day, when you came in.
And we got a really good report on that. A really good report. There's a couple things at the golf course, the sidewalk at the grill, the carpet in the ballroom was kinda hoobied up a little bit, needs to be straightened out. Where the guys sit at the table outside the pro shop, we need to put a little rail up there. There was a pothole at the fire station. We need to paint the curb out here at the rec center, change the ventilation type thing. Police Department had some carpet that was loose, we need to get that fixed. Replace some tile at 911. And at the hall center, there was a pothole and some sprinkler system valves that should have been locked, that weren't locked. That was it.
Nothing here, everything good here?
So, you got a really good report from that. That's good news. And that's all I have for announcements unless somebody else has got anything to say. Approval of minutes from the regular meeting, 12:11, 2017. Can I make a motion?
I second.
All in favor?
No.
Opposed? Approval of reports?
I saw move.
So. All in favor?
No.
Opposed? Approval to pay bills, that's worth it.
I saw move, that we do that.
All in favor? Opposed. Move on to business. I need an approval to sign the network annual letter of commitment for Paintsville Main Street. I need that from council.
That just basically says that we are still doing the Main Street program.
Yes, that basically says that you will stay within the framework of the Main Street program.
And that not giving it to Tourism, that's just...
Right, that is not giving it to Tourism, that is making sure that we keep that title of the Main Street program. If you lose the Main Street title, then it may take you two to three years to get it back. Benefits would be applying for grants, is the main thing.
I'll make a motion, I don't think I don't deserve any...
No.
I'll say.
All in favor? Opposed. Mike Spradlin, we need to appoint a member to the Paintsville Housing Authority. Do you have somebody in mind?
Yes, sir. Ms. Rhonda Littoral here. I'd like to request that she be placed as a board member. She's been with our, held several different positions with the resident council, and lived over there for several years as well. She's a former nurse, and she's my manager.
So, you are recommending this council to appoint Rhonda Littoral?
Yes, sir. Yes, Mayor.
Does Rhonda live at the High Rise or Sixth Ridge?
She lives at the High Rise.
Is she a Democrat or a Republican?
She didn't like it.
She's an independent.
Because, because as far as I know, you have to abide by certain guidelines, right?
Correct. We already currently have two Republicans and one Democrat.
Oh, really?
So...
No, we're not getting that.
So, I guess she's a Republican?
She's an independent.
Independent?
So, we have, currently right now, we have two Republicans, one Democrat, and an empty seat. So, it needs to either be Democrat or independent.
And so, because you've got, because you've got two Republicans, there has to be either two Democrats...
Well, that's what...
Or a Democrat or an independent.
Yes, sir.
Do you think you will table?
We use a table.
How long has we seen this token?
Since July.
Since July of last year?
Uh, 2017.
Can I ask some questions?
Yes, Coach Belchuk, you can ask some questions.
Just, I've got some phone calls, and I went over to High Rise Saturday.
Yes, sir.
Saturday. How long was the front door being broken?
Then approximately, we ordered, what happened was, the outer door had come off the track, and we ordered the part, we're with LA Glass, and the part was ordered on December the 23rd because of the holiday, the part had to be manufactured. The part came in on Friday, it came in, fixed the slot, fixed the track, got everything back to working normally, then the motor went out on those doors. He came back the same day, tried, Tommy from LA Glass and Supply tried to repair it, was unable to, ordered the part, couldn't order it until today, we were having it overnighted. My best guess would be hopefully tomorrow with the latest on Wednesday. We done everything we could, I spoke with the mayor about it when the situation happened, and we spoke with the fire chief.
Actually, the mayor went down there.
The mayor went down there as well, and it happened on the same day. We tried to repair it, and like we said, we'd already ordered the part, we done everything that we could to try to get it working again. Between the, Mike Wylie with the State Fire Inspector, and along with the fire chief, Chief Ralston, we determined we couldn't lock the door off. We understood, it's record cold, it's freezing, we got heaters to put out in the lobby to try to help the best we could, we could not close the doors off, could not lock an entrance to that building. Recommendation from them was to put cover over that, and that is what we did. We done everything we could.
Let me answer this, though.
There was nothing wrong, there was nothing wrong with the heat, the heat was working in everyone's apartments, everyone had heat, we even checked on some of the ones that were in the lower ground unit to make sure that they were okay. I think we supplied heat too. I know of one unit that said that they were more cold than normal, and we provided this market.
So, heaters in the hallways, is that cold where they're supposed to be at the end of the, where the exit is? Do they, they have to be there? Is that, is that by federal regulation that you have to put those heaters?
To be honest with you, I'm not sure. I know that they are original with the building, so, I mean, I can check on that.
Because, I went on the first floor and the second floor, there's none of those heaters working. They're hot, there's no air coming out of them.
The one at the end, on the ground floor?
Yes, there's one heater, yes.
Yeah, the motor on that end is also not working, we've ordered a part for it.
How about on the second floor? Because it's the same as that one.
Is it the same?
It's hot, and it's not warm.
I wasn't aware of that one.
Okay, how long have you been over there? So, I'm aware of that.
Over, how long?
Over the housing authority?
Almost 15 years.
Okay. How long has that heater been out on the first floor?
That I cannot answer, I'm not sure. I can get you some answers, and I'm not sure at this point how long. I know that when I went and checked, the heat, it wasn't blowing, Brian Glanton worked on it, got it going, blow it again, and he told me we're gonna need a new motor. I said, let's go ahead and order it. Absolutely.
I was told that, that lady told me she's been there 12 years, it's never worked. I understand what she was telling.
Okay, I understand.
I went up to the fifth floor, and the lady told me, her apartment was real warm because heat rises.
Sure.
And that heater on that floor was not really, it was hot, but it was not blowing.
I know we had...
I checked three floors, and none of those heat, there's no, no blowing heat in the High Rise, for ambulance, none. I also went into the laundry room. You have a, you have a space heater, which is, to my part, is dangerous. That place was catch on fire, went trouble.
We do try to monitor those things, we've had, had some issues in the past, I think that...
Can you not put a wall mounted heater in there?
I can check on that, absolutely.
And there's some other issues, I don't wanna get into it right now.
Maybe we can discuss after the meeting, if you'd like.
When we do that?
Okay. Be more than happy to sit down with you on any topic.
Okay, thank you.
Let me ask something, I used to be on the board.
I remember, Sarah.
And, I'm trying to remember, are you a member also of the board?
Well, as a...
Are you, you're not a vote?
I'm not a voting member, I am a member, I'm the secretary of the board.
Okay.
Yes.
And then the mayor is also on the board?
Yes, I am.
On the board.
Correct.
And I don't want Rhonda to think that this is anything personal, because, and I know she thinks it probably is, but it isn't.
Okay.
But, we just get a lot of complaints, and there's a lot of things we probably need to sit down with the authority and the mayor, and you all, and discuss.
I'm always open, you know, any, anytime.
And until that time, I know you probably still need a, another person on the board.
Okay.
So, whatever the council wants to do about that, that's fine with me.
But you want to table it?
Well, I was, until maybe we could discuss some of these issues, that every time I report.
Okay, so, we have a vote, from who to table this one?
I make the motion for our move that we do that.
Okay, second?
I'll say.
All in favor? Opposed?
Need to walk down there.
Is everybody gonna vote to table it?
I have a question. All of our, if you all don't want to do that, do not feel, don't feel...
No, I feel like you have to.
No, I know, but what I'm asking is, all of our entities that we have, that we represent, our community for, our city branches, rub down, tourism, high rise, can they not give us a report each meeting of, this is how we stand, this is what we see, this is...
This is what we need?
This is what need, this is what...
Well, maybe if we can meet with them, but...
Let's go ahead and take care of this agenda item first, then we can talk about this when it's all this council, how about that?
I guess, I would ask, you know, on appointing a member, what does that have to do with getting the repairs made? Is that what we're stuck on?
No.
Okay, I don't know, I don't, I'm coming, I don't know anything. But I, first, what you're, I would bow to someone that knows more about it than me, because I do not know anything.
So, do we need to go through this again, Ms. Virgin? I need a motion to table?
I need to rescind this one.
Motion to rescind this one?
Let's not do that, let's just go ahead with it.
Just table it?
No, no, let's just go ahead and do it. I don't want to make it seem as if it's an issue I told Rhonda, it wasn't anything personal at all, so...
Well, we need to rescind the table.
I'll rescind it.
See if I have a second to rescind.
I believe in the decision, and it said that I have a lot of...
Well, if we can meet with them, and maybe before the next meeting, and so I, I'll take it back.
Well, I think what I'm gonna do...
We can talk directly.
I'm going to...
I think that maybe we can speak with them all.
I am going to exercise my executive privilege here, and we are going to table number two.
Hey, when we do get into that, though, that's great, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, we need to discuss that, there. Number three, presentation of audit, Mr. Jim Bryant, and I hope this is good.
No, it's gonna be fine. I'm Jim Bryant from Welson County, I know there's a few new faces on that council, Patricia I think it is, Coach Bo, is that his name? That's not me, too. So, I think you're Welson pretty much, I guess, so. Anyway, I've got your audit here for June 30, 2017, and unfortunately, I had it a month earlier this year, I was a little delayed on it last year. Kind of go over it briefly, on page three, you have the independent auditor's report right there. This here, for the new members, this is just, this has the opinion of the auditor on it, it also kind of outlines what management's responsibilities were for the financial statements, the auditor's responsibility, and you'll see at the bottom, what we're focusing on right now is the opinion on the financial statements. And after doing my audit, my opinion on the financial statements is, presents fairly financial position in the city of Paintsville as of June 30, 2017, which is an unmodified opinion, so, which is, in other terms, a clean report. So, that's, that's what you strive for, and I'll go over some of the financials here. You look over on page, kind of go over revenue and expenses on page seven. And I'm just gonna focus on the general fund, we got Paintsville Tourism here on the real columns, I'll present it to the commission here in a couple weeks at their meeting. But if you look at the general fund, total revenues last year was $6,194,953. Your total expenditures were $6,136,759, giving you an excess of revenues over expenditures of $58,194. And then you see your other financing sources, you had $195,000 transferred in from Tourism, kind of helped, there was some money there for the golf course recreation, the cleanup for the Alpha Festival, and also the fireworks. You sold some surplus property last year, about $22,052, and borrowed $75,818 to purchase two police cruisers and a pickup truck, and an ambulance. So, after, after that money came in, you had a total increase in fund balance last year of $351,064, bringing the fund balance at beginning of the year from $761,170 to your ending fund balance of $1,112,234. If you look over on page five, this is the balance sheet for the general fund. You see total assets, now, this is, this is fund accounting, you just won't show your fixed assets or your long-term debt, but we'll go over those in a minute. Your total assets under fund accounting for the general fund, $1.5 million. You had total cash in the bank of $718,748. You have some receivables, property tax receivables, ambulance receivables, there's some rent receivables there, and some other receivables, Ms. Lanis. The due from Paintsville Utilities, 64, that's the garbage receivable, that was due at June 30. And then the due from the 911 fund, which is, this is something I wanted to discuss with you, 911 fund owes the general fund $507,159. Now, that's, like I said, that's been accumulating, and I've been talking about this for the last decade. It started accumulating back in 2007, where the revenues coming in from 911 just haven't been sufficient enough to cover the operating expenses of 911 fund. So, at first, it started out about $30,000, $40,000 a year, then it's up to about $100,000. I think this past year is about $7,000, because I think the revenues did increase on 911, about $30,000 last year. So, basically, what I was gonna tell you, and I talked to mayor about this, that $507,000, in all honesty, 911's never gonna be able to pay that back to the general fund. So, maybe someday you as a councilman, mayor, and Kim may sit down and discuss, probably the general fund more than likely is probably might have to forgive that money, and if they do, then it needs to be, you know, taken out the fund balance of the general fund and so forth, so. But that's something you guys need to discuss, what you guys want to do with that. Total liabilities for the general fund were $404,68, accounts payable made up $170,000 of that, and you've got some payroll taxes, accrued vacation, accrued retirement for CRS, and then there's still some money that's still due to the road aid, that's accumulated through the years, but still needs to be over by the road aid fund. And then you can see at the bottom there, the total fund balance that I mentioned earlier, Towards the middle, the financial statements, you have disclosures, the notes to the financials, and I'll just kind of, you can kind of read over those, but the ones I kind of wanna show kind of go over with you. This highlighted on page 22, this shows the total assets of the city, capital assets, I'm sorry, total capital assets, and then depreciation, is $8,331,657. And you can see down on the bottom how the depreciation on those assets were broken down by department, general government, public safety, recreation, streets, sanitation, tourism. Total depreciation on those assets from last year is $615,533. The next page has Paintsville Utilities assets, I don't know those. Long-term debt of the city, excluding Paintsville Utilities. On page 25 and 26, you see the total liabilities. The long-term debt at June 30, 2017, $1,468,615, and you can see that was decreased from $1,783,305 prior year, because of that working capital loan you had with the First Bank, catch, long discounts payable just a couple years ago, that loan's been paid off, so. So, I'll let you, if you have any questions over those disclosure notes, anytime, just ask me anything, just call me. The last report, you'll see in the back is the report on internal control and compliance. There were no compliance issues to be reported during my audit. The only internal control issues, which these are in the report every year of sanitation, is multiple, people doing multiple functions in the city, for instance, like Virgin, she collects money post to the property tax ledger and so forth like that, so. This is a common, common note in all smaller organizations, even Paintsville Utilities has that note in their organizations, I do some local libraries, they have the same note, so. And then the other deficiency was financial reporting, you know, it's basically writing the financial statements in here. I'm helping Kim and the city write the financials, you know, because they don't have CPA, who works for the city, who can do that and so forth. But other than that, you know, like I said, unmodified opinion, any report, I did want to say, the mayor and I discussed this the other day, you had a $300-some-thousand increase in your fund balance last year, but from my knowledge, I think CRS is gonna be, have a major jump next year as far as percentage, but the city's gonna be contributing, does it right now, Kim, 19?
19.18.
It's going to 28 percent.
28.18.
Next fiscal year, 17, 18. I think you all already calculated, that's gonna add about $200,000 extra cost to the city.
Actually, it's gonna add about $240,000.
$240,000.
Extra cost for the city.
So, so you can see where you had a $300,000 increase in the fund balance, that more than likely is gonna eat up some of that, so be prepared, and I'm sure you're gonna work that in your budget sometime, you know, this coming year, so. That's all I have, have any questions, I mean, I'll try to have to answer them, if you need to call me, I work at Welson County, phone number's in the book, Kim has my number, and I mean, I'll have to answer any questions for you, so.
Any questions?
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. So, how would you rate that audit? A, B, C, D, or F?
You got an unmodified opinion.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open up anything to council, if you may wanna discuss.
Just what she was talking about, getting a report from certain, like the housing authority and other people, probably.
We're here to represent the community of people, and we have all these different entities for all the people out. I would ask for the representatives of each one of these to come to each meeting and give us a report on how everything's going, any problems, what needs to be fixed, recommendations, but to report to us, so that we make sure that we are taking care of our people.
Or give us something when they have their meetings or whatever in the, in the packet, like you tell these and the others.
Okay, so, so we either report to the meeting, or give us something in writing?
That do we do?
That tells us what they're doing, and what progress they're making or whatever, because...
All city entities?
Yes, well, for the press, I've got a list here of goals for 2018, and one of those goals is to make sure that our four civic organizations start working together, and mainly that's Main Street, Trail Town, Tourism, and Chamber of Commerce. It's listed out from those entities, what they're supposed to do for this city. That's one of the things we had listed in the goals of 2018, and I think that's what Patricia is wanting, to make sure that every entity comes to us, or gives us... or gives us something to where we can tell that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Like Virgil, I just sees today of the...
Paintsville. Playing a joke.
The painting, and that's really nice to have, I really appreciate that, because we can't go to all the meetings and...
Exactly.
You know, and can't be there for all of them, but if they can give us some kind of accounting like that, that's great. And I, I think that's a good idea to try.
I agree. But I do want the press to understand one thing. Number 12 on this list should actually be at number one.
Is that number 12, the one you just read?
No.
No, that'd be my question when I get a chance.
I'll take what number 12 is.
That's what, that's what I was wondering about.
Is to take care of our citizens to the best of our ability. That's number 12. So that actually should be number one. But anyway, this, these are the goals for 2018 that we're gonna try to accomplish. And I just wanted to throw that out there. Is there anything else from council?
Yes, I do have some. I think it's, it's past time that we revisit the 911 ordinance. I think, I think, I don't know what it's gonna take when we have to get some legal opinion, but...
And you do, you all do have a, I think there's a copy of that.
And I, and I read it, but...
That's correct.
You know, for the, the taxpaying citizens of Paintsville, to be totally paying for all of 911 is, is not at all fair. We need, we need to approach the elected officials in Johnson County that, you know, I'd like to know the split of, I mean, pretty well know the split of citizens of the county to the city. And I don't wanna make it a county or city thing, but at some point, I, I think the county's gonna have to start helping us fund 911.
I don't think we have a contract threatening now with them.
We don't.
I don't think it's ever been renewed.
Let me try to explain it to you. The first ordinance, if I'm not mistaken, was signed in 1991.
Twenty.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
And that was for a duration of 20 years?
2011.
So, 2011, that ordinance should have ended, correct? So, I think as a council, you really need to sit down and look at the possibility of rewriting that to where that we not, we are not...
100%.
Obliged 100% above the cost of the revenue. If that makes sense to you?
Oh, no.
It does.
It does, yeah, absolutely.
I mean...
So, you know, a lot of people will probably get upset over it, but...
I mean, it's just, it's costing the city taxpayers a lot of money that we could be spending on sidewalks and streets, you know, but we're, we're spending on 911 for the betterment of, of the whole county. It's not, I, I'm, we don't need to drop it for the county, but we just need a little bit of financial help from the county judge and...
And you're exactly right, Kim.
In my opinion.
I'm the mayor.
I think the town is coming to ask them to...
And you people sit on the city council.
What does the county do with the 911 funds back?
Honey, I have no idea. Unless Ms. Kim could answer that question, I don't know.
I didn't hear what she said.
The 911 funds collected by the county?
They don't collect.
No, they don't collect.
We take care of the county. I know we take care of the county, but 911 charges are on their phone bills and stuff. Where does that money go to?
It goes to the city.
For operating expenses. The problem's being the cell phones.
Obviously, it's not being, it's not being raised.
No.
No, that's the other issue.
Oh, for cell phones.
A lot of people have cell phones, they, for their regular...
You've lost a lot of landline.
We have to have, we have to have 911. I mean, there's nothing, there's no substitute in it, just that we just need to re, in my opinion, revisit the way it's written or rewrite it to where, you know, we need to do something with the cost associated with 911. We're, we're drastically in the hole every year with it, with the cost.
And I'm sorry, all the counties are...
I would not surprise me.
If I'm not mistaken, when we got into this, about 2012 or somewhere in that range, it was talked about that if we didn't, that 911 service would be run out of pocket posts.
Yeah.
You know, you, somebody needing an ambulance, there's no shot of it getting...
But I'm telling you, this can be worked out when we don't lose $100,000.
That's what, I agree, should be. Whatever it takes, you know, we, we need to really look at it, in my opinion.
It should. I mean, I...
I mean, it's a necessary...
Oh, God, have it. But at the same time, we gotta work as efficiently as possible.
Yes, we do.
Better rate 911.
Okay, anything else from council?
Yeah.
Oh, pardon?
No, it's not.
Okay. I'll open it up to the floor, and I think Mr. Lewandowski wants to...
Yeah, I wanna go first. I go first?
Yes, you can, but you're normally, you always go first.
All right, for you guys who don't know me, my name's Justin Lewandowski. I started off here last year, I got elected to city council. I resigned in August, you know, due to, I got a letter in the mail, you know, my VA got reduced, and I took it looking, you know, bad, but, and I, I quit prematurely. And I, you know, it's one of my biggest regrets. But, but actually, what had happened was, when I got reduced, that was proof that medical cannabis has treated my conditions. And that's why VA is, you know, lowered my evaluation. And what I'm asking here is from city council on the city of Paintsville, to draft a letter to Frankford, asking them to pass some kind of legislation for 2018. That's all I'm asking. Nothing illegal, just asking, you know, a letter, you know, draft a letter of resolution, you know, stating, you know, urging them to pass medical cannabis for 2018. And, you know, it's been, you know, a life changer for me. All, you know, last year, I've done a lot. I've headed the whole town. I mean, I got the governor here. I think we're on the right track to get things moving. I'm more than willing to work with all the, you know, Chamber of Commerce, Main Street, Tourism, and really get this ball moving here in Paintsville. Cause I really believe that we can move, you know, the whole tourism aspect of it. But, yeah, I just can't go back to prescriptions. Prescriptions make us suicidal. I mean, I, I was holding guns to my head, I was taking AMN, I was taking the whole bottle of AMN, just trying to kill myself. Betrazano, Depakos, Seriquil, lithium. I was on 100 pills a day. 100 pills, 23 different prescriptions, 34 years old. I'm telling you, it's no way for a veteran to live. We need a better quality of life. I was really, I'm really hoping you guys have in your heart to draft a resolution for patients like me, veterans, and then, you know, people like this Black out here. I mean, who's suffering from, you know, 50 seizures a day. And that's all I ask. Thank you.
Any thoughts on that?
Well, nobody wants to address the elephant in the room, but I, I understand, you know, he has to know what we're up against, and he has to know how I think the majority of the citizens feel. And, and I, and I understand it, that it's helping. And I know, I know of, of a lot of people that it hasn't. But I just don't feel that we can...
I have no problem putting my name on that letter.
It's just a letter of...
It's just a letter of resolution.
Just a letter of support.
This is a letter of support. I got a copy of the letter right here. Would you guys like to see it?
I don't have a problem drafting a letter for Mr. Lewandowski or anybody else that needs medical.
Right, just medical.
Medical, cannabis.
I'm against recreation as well.
Here we go, alcohol, and now, I know, I know what Sarah's saying, but, I mean...
I mean, I know that it helps, helps, I know, I read it every day, I know that it does.
Twenty-six states? Something like that?
Twenty-nine states?
Yeah, and I know that it does. And, and I, and I do feel it's fine, I know what it's... I mean, I know.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you very much. Carter Lane. Do you all got, you got any questions?
Are we still on the back burner?
No, you're on the burner. You're not on the back burner, but you're...
How high's the plane?
Low, medium, or high?
No. Ms. Kim?
Yes.
We are making progress, right?
Yes, we are, we are. I've given Jake...